I have 600,000 set up that costs a good so, but I have 600,000 of um her- of um her- excuse me, of revenue as well. I did it that way basically so you wouldn't hit- hit- you actually hit the actual budget to the amount. Because if I put, say, $80,000 in there, and then it gets to a point where we hit that amount, and somebody wants to expand their services, we actually can't issue that inventory out the warehouse to go do those services till we come back to council and get more money. That's seven weeks to do the whole process. So there's- by having 600,000, there's no exposure to the budget, because I have 600,000 as an expense and a revenue. So if I only spend 91,000 in it, I'm only gonna get 91,000 of actual cost or money back from that customer. Or if I put it up 600,000, I got 600,000 revenue either. It's a zero effect on the budget. So if you say, okay, I want to cut that down to $100,000, that's gonna force me to cut the revenue down to $100,000. So it's still a zero effect on the AOS budget.
So I got a $600,000 revenue line item?
Exactly.
To match this.
That all sets.
Okay, I got you. I got you. Thank you. That's good. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Just out of curiosity though, what is the most we've ever done?
Not that much.
I mean, I get what you're saying. You explained it, but, I mean, have we gotten close to 300, 400? And I get what you're saying, it zeros out on both sides, but... Oh, you just like that number?
I like that number. It's high. Um, actually, back in 2012, we did 203,000. 13 was 300,000, 14 about 295, 15 was 124, but last year was only 91, which you've seen in the book right now.
And just so I could be clear, an example is if somebody wants to have- improve their, like, a transformer that's outside, if they doing something new within their commercial business, and utilities say the transformer that's on that line can't handle it, you're gonna go out and change it and build the custom, the company for that transformer?
Well, the most part correct, but Terry answered it, of course, even better.
Yeah, let me know, Mike, his group's involved in it more than anybody else. Maybe I can give you an example, so I can kind of tie it all together.
You know, we get a request sometimes where a customer buy two lots, and the transformer ends up right at their doorstep, so they would want the transformer moved to the new property line, and so, you know, we'll- it's all billable. So we're happy to do the work. We work up a cost, and that's would be an example where we would issue our accounts receivable, they pay us in advance, we do the work, and everybody's happy.
You know, in the end, it's not having an adverse impact on our budget, because it's a matter of, we only use this if it turns out customers paying us due anyway. It's just to have a place in the budget to build a credit against.
Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, sir. Right above there, 7-0, I mean, 5-0-2, 7-0-1-0, uninsured losses. The actual in 15, 16 was 344,000, and then in 16, 17 is 1.4 million, and now I see that for the proposed is 534,000 on the uninsured losses. So can you help me with that, understand that, please?
Okay, uninsured losses, they get charged based on their actual losses for the previous year. So if they have a accident this year, it's paid by the risk management fund, and then they have to reimburse the risk management fund next year. So in 16, 17, we were estimating $1.4 million in uninsured losses, but they don't have that same exposure for next year. We're estimating that to decrease.
But then in 15, 16, we had 344,000, and it went up to 1.4 million?
Well, all it takes is one large accident. That line item could go from 300,000 to $5 million. It just takes one accident.
So I understand that, so what we are doing, well, someone is, I want to make sure we're not underestimating.
You don't- we really don't have any control over it. You may recall that during the year, we come back to you with an actual budget amendment to shore it up, because it's just an estimate. We look at- what we do is, we have our risk management manager, look at the losses that's already been incurred so far this fiscal year, and she's looking at it, and she says, "Well, it looks like they're having a really good year, so we're gonna project that forward into next year."
So she could have projected 200,000, any number, just a projection?
It's just a projection based on what we've actually experienced so far this year.
All right, thanks.
Okay, bottom of 221, support services, top of 222. Bottom of 224, 225, power production. Mr. Castillo?
Terry, last line on the page, promotion costs. We went from 2699 in promotional cost to 46,800. Are we hiring somebody, or what are we doing?
Good afternoon, Jeff Stewart, engineering and power supply manager. Those promotion costs are for two specific engineering positions. They're in there, they're natural type promotional items, and so you could probably split it up, divided by two about, for those positions. It's kind of a standard promotional type thing for engineer to go to engineer one to engineer two, or engineer two to engineer three.
Wow, 23,000 a year increase, that's pretty good, for two positions.
What exactly are those positions? What level of engineer are we talking about, and the exact amount of that promotion?
If I remember this correctly, one of the engineering positions was electrical engineer two to electrical engineer three, and the other one was a mechanical engineer one to mechanical engineer two. Is that- do you have the list? I'm kind of going off my memory here.
Is that a power plant technician?
Okay, a power... Yeah. I was mistaken. There was three positions total. One of them is electrical engineer two, electrical engineer three, and there are two power plant technician positions for promotion from a- I forgot what the number was, I just looked at it.
It says apprenticeship.
Yeah, so it's like a step promotion, similar to what we talked about earlier. So it's three total positions. One of them is electrical engineer two to three, and the other two are apprenticeships for power plant technicians.
You have any openings? I got three jobs. They don't pay this. Thank you.
Are the apprenticeships, are those through civil service? Is that- and they're automatic? I mean, I know years and years ago, in another department, we was explaining the engineer concept, that when an engineer gets a certain level of certification, it was like $11,000 back then, I think. Now I'm seeing apprenticeships, the tech positions, and that's automatic? I'm trying to see how those things are determined, because, again, just from a realistic standpoint, that's what all employees would love to have. You know, hey, I go out, if I got a GED and I go get a associate degree, it's not automatic. And that's what certainly I have had to try to address or understand is, and I guess this is also something that the administration may just hear about if they haven't already, is how do we determine what positions automatically get increases based on furthering their education or their training versus others? That's something I've never really wrapped my homes around. The engineer, and I got it, they said it was licensing, but now I'm seeing one, now we talking technicians, so, and I know we working on some, glad we're included. I want to see the inclusive of these lower paid and less skilled positions as well. I'm trying to see, how is this determined?
Yeah, so there are some criteria that's set forth through the civil service process to look at, you know, where these employees, it's not just an education thing, it's more of knowing the skill level, is reaching a certain skill level. And so they would have to be assessed by supervisors to see if they meet that level. Not everybody gets it. Some people, sometimes we budget for these things, and we don't- the employee doesn't get certified. You know, it's- we expect them to be there, so what we try to do is to get it in the budget so we have the ability to move forward with it in case the employee has reached that level. But if they don't, then we don't go to civil service with it. But civil service is the entity that kind of oversees that along with the people that we have to supervise the person, to look at what skill levels they have. You know, lineman is an example that, you know, we've talked about earlier. You know, you bring a person in to become a lineman, he knows nothing about being a lineman, so he has to get some training. And then we've got to see if his skill level gets him to the point that we can ultimately be a lineman we can trust to be able to do what needs to be done in the field without getting himself or someone else hurt. So, and civil service has encouraged trying to put positions like this in place, and it's special for the field personnel. It seems to, you know, work well. I'm not sure how it applies across the board. But we're trying, like in customer services, for example, the same thing. So employees can, so we can try to keep employees who are good at their jobs, have performed well, and are able to manage all the skills necessary. So if it's something that the council feels like they'd want to see across the board, I think it's a conversation we should have with the civil service and the administration.
With civil service, who's determining which positions obtain apprenticeship-type promotions versus others?
They're the ones that's designing the systems. So, you know, what we'll do is, we, as directors, you know, I'll go to them and say, you know, this is an area here where we want to try to keep people here for a long time because of how long it takes them to get to learn what needs to be learned to operate their job. You know, water operators, for example, you've got to have certified water operators to be able to operate our system. You know, so we want to be in a position that we can pay those guys enough to be able to keep them, because they're not going off somewhere else, kind of like what we have with the lineman situation. So we've tried to put forward those where there's a real problem, where we've seen where there's an issue that needs to be dealt with, but we haven't gone to them across the board for every employee. And if it's something that, you know, that between the administration and council you want to do, I'm sure some civil service would be happy to take a look at. I don't want to speak for them, but I know that it becomes, it provides a means for us to retain qualified, capable employees, which is what we want to do.
Yeah, I believe it was the whole thing, but you could do, you have some on 225? Mr. Lewis?
Yes, 5-0-27020, equipment made is Dogbonet. I was under impression that we was no longer using Dogbonet Electrical Plant.
That's correct. We do not generate electricity from Dogbonet.
But if you look down the pages, there's a lot of, you know, proposal, 45,000, the one I'm talking about, and you continue going on. So we're not producing electricity, so someone is still operating there, we still, the plant is still in operation?
We have active systems at the power plant. We have grounds maintenance, we have an office building, we have fire suppression, we have a lot of those types of things that we still maintain until we can ultimately demolish the site.
Because if I can recall, last year, I thought we was working toward demolishing the building, because that's the reason why we opened up other plants.
Right. It's in the works, as Mr. Conk described, asked a question earlier. There's a project in the capital budget for new generation. The first phase of that will be the demolition, deconstruction of that unit. Second phase would be to build new generation. We just have not reached that point yet, so we still have to maintain certain systems within that power plant.
Can I just add something more to that? Right adjacent to that power plant is a bunch of electrical apparatus outside, power lines, breakers, and so forth. So, and that's the system of all that apparatus is going to remain after the power plant's taken down, because it's integral to the rest of our rest of our system operates. So it's all tied together. So there's a number of pieces of equipment that are in the Dogbonet plant that actually control all that equipment on the outside. So you still have to maintain that. Plus, the Dogbonet plant has lead paint, it has asbestos, it's got, you know, there's things that have to be, that you have to monitor, and you've got to fix, and you've got to deal with. So the amount of dollars we spent on Dogbonet has dropped substantially from what it was in its heyday, but we still have to have something there to be able to deal with the fact that we have an operating substation next to it, and that you've still got devices and things that need to be addressed. We don't want to spend any more money there than we have to, but we want to make sure we have enough in case something happens that we have to address it.
All right, thanks.
I would like to add one thing. You know, throughout the couple of these line items that you've identified, we are taking efforts and making a lot of effort to salvage equipment. So if there's something that's useful and has value, we're identifying those things, pulling them to the side, and ultimately, we would go through the proper purchasing functions to maybe auction them off, sell them, do something like that to get some money back. But we are going through that process to determining salvage.
I just recall, I remember last year, we was going through the budget, I remember we recall, I mean, I remember we talking about that, that we was going to eliminate Dogbonet, and I'm just seeing that it hadn't been demolished as of yet, so...
Yeah, yeah, it's probably a large project. We're taking one step at a time. We're not in a position yet to begin selling bonds, which is what we need to do, and that's going to happen probably sometime next year, so just one step at a time.
Okay.
Still on 225, contractual services, 70907-dash-zero. There's an increase proposed. Can I have the actual? Is, as of April, it was 153. Where are we today?
Could you repeat the number?
604 is actual as of today, so that was budgeted at 680. We're gonna get close. What I'm interested in is the increase, Mr. Huvall. What is different in this line item in this upcoming budget that wasn't there in our last budget?
Okay, so the superintendent of the power plant retired in the last...
In January.
In January. And so we wanted to, for continuity purposes, we brought a consultant in to help us to make sure that we're keeping everything where it needs to be, and this is power plant overall, it's not just Dogbonet, it's the whole system. And so we added some dollars for that, but Jeff and I were just discussing that. It looks like we can reduce that by how much?
We could probably, if you wanted, we're looking for reduction. I mean, we're always looking for reductions. If we were looking to reduce 70907, I'm very comfortable in about $80,000 to $90,000 reduction. Just since we submitted the budget itself, we've found a lot of information. We're now in the process of appointing a power plant superintendent on a permanent basis. We can pull back those engineering support services that we've been contracting for the last six or eight months, so we're comfortable in reducing by about $80,000, depending on what you would like to do.
Somebody want to... Mr. Castillo?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to cut that line item by 100 grand.
Okay, line item 5-0-2-7020, 70907-dash-zero, contractual services. Proposed is 848,000, which will be reduced by 100,000 to make it 748,000. That amendment is being offered by Castillo. Are there any objections? Seeing none, that'll go forward as a general amendment. See if y'all can get on a roll. I heard you said you... 226, members 226, top of 226. We'll move to electric operations, administration and management, middle of 226. Transmission and distribution, bottom of 226, top of 227. Mr. Conk?
I've noted on several areas where training of personnel has been increased. It wasn't substantial in other areas, but on this particular one, on the line item 5-0-2-7032, 5-0-6-0-0, we're jumping from 96 to 61. Why that significant increase in dollars?
He's on the next page.
At the very top of 227, second line.
Okay, you know, this is the lineman, so as we bring in, you know, apprentices, we send them to a correspondence course that they go through, so some of these funds are for that. We've also tried to train some of the intermediate linemen, and picking out courses for them to go to train them to be our future leaders.
Can you cover this contractual services area? Let's look at the actual, and this one is a little under five, so if you could tell us what we do with that. That's line item 5-0-2-7035, 70907. It's at the top of page 229 underneath facilities management.
There are several items in this group. Some of it's security for the complex, which covers the ALS facility plus the water wastewater sites. We have janitorial in there for city hall. We have just maintenance of facilities like elevators, cooling towers for the ACs, pest control. I mean, it's, you know, there's probably about eight to 10 items on here.
Current to date, we're then 69,400.
369, and we doing a small increase?
These items are bid each year, so we are seeing a few increases on some of them.
Looks like the largest is to the sheriff's department, 327,000 so far.
Still on 229, water operations, production admin. Ms. Abear?
Line item 5-0-2-7045, 72100-dash-zero, equipment rental. Can we explain that increase?
Craig O'Tro, water wastewater manager. Basically, that's to rent plates and stuff for those street repairs that you might see all around the city, and also for the equipment to be able to get contractors in to get the work done.
I understand the reason for the equipment rental, but why they increased this? Because your actual right now is already just $200, and your projected 7200, and you're proposing 7200.
All right, let's see if we got it one here.
Your current budget's only 397.
Right here, it's a 745, equipment. I don't have a detail on that one. Paul John up.
Yeah, let's see if we need extra money. John?
John? I don't have my detail on that one.
Stumped him.
John with long water distribution. What we're encountering now, just with the growth and the number of leaks, sometimes we cannot, we don't have the funds to buy the equipment, so we have to rent. So we're renting everything from leak detecting equipment, pumps sometimes we have to rent. So it's things of those natures.
We're looking up some history for you, see if that'll help you.
Yeah, thank you.
John, I guess with, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Abear, but she's trying to relate to the increases, based on what you've done in the past versus what you've used up until this point, and then now there's a proposing, a significant increase. Is there a reason for those increases based on what you're renting and using?
Because we have to do a lot more repairs, and so we're not, I can't purchase equipment readily, so... readily, so the, the easiest thing is to rent. So we're, we're renting more to keep up with the...
So you're projecting with the amount of work that's been happening this upcoming year?
Especially with the plates. So we just made a major purchase with the plates and we're now having to rent the plates to keep up with the repairs.
That's perfect. You just answered the question. That's all I need. Thanks, Chairman, for the assist.
In fiscal year thirteen and fourteen, they spent over five thousand in that line item.
Okay, perfect. That's all I needed. Thanks.
Bottom of two thirty, operations. And due top of two thirty-one, let's keep that together. Bottom of two thirty and the half of two thirty-one, all of operations, treatment and administration. Bottom of two thirty-one, wastewater collection, top of two thirty-two. Bottom of two thirty-one, top of two thirty-two. The contractual services line item five zero two seven zero six five seven zero nine zero seven dash zero, again, another one of those that, that's having a pretty significant increase, about twenty-five percent. Give me the actual, please, and an explanation on what's going to be different this year than last year.
Seventy-nine thousand six hundred.
We're doing additional SSES work from our latest, uh, the sanitary sewer evaluation surveys on our sewer collection system. Our engineers and our civil department use a lot of money for television inspection, for grouting, for, in situ form, and the lines to make them new again.
So let me ask you this. Good job of, of explaining, we, we got the list. The increases, you're going to be doing more of that this year than you did last year?
Correct.
Okay, so the items were well listed. I was just trying to see what that two hundred or so thousand dollar increase was. You gonna be doing that much more?
And more re-control.
Two thirty-two, engineering, civil. Ms. Abair?
Same question that I, same type of question I had last time on the number line item five zero two seven zero eight zero eight nine five one zero dash zero, special equipment capital. Explain that increase, maybe specifically the projects.
The increase is a truck, a vehicle. So it's, it's a new request by this division for a very old truck that's on its last leg.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
This is a question for finance. Why we didn't just call it a truck? Special equipment capital, and it amounts to a truck. That's why y'all get them awards?
You know, that, that... I, I, I can't, I can't give you a good answer on that one. That's the term that Lafayette has always used.
Say that again?
That's term, the terminology that Lafayette's always used. I would have called it, I would have called it automobiles, land, buildings, but... That's, that's a new one I learned when I came here.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll see the, the detail, when you actually see the truck listed, you'll see it when we go into capital.
It's gonna say truck, huh?
Yeah, yeah, we're not going to hide it from you. It's there.
So some, some would feel, when you, when you're here for a little while, some would feel that that's a good way to kind of, you know, because you'd say, especially equipment, well, okay, you know, you go for that, because sometime we try to manage the number of vehicles people get, and especially if it's an old one that public works say need to be replaced because the maintenance, you know, is dripping oil and can't, tire pressure just keep going down.
My staff has heard this from me many times. When we look at our next ERP system, instead of lumping all that capital, I like to see the traditional land, buildings, automobiles, small equipment, and so hopefully we can incorporate that in the new accounting structure.
Bottom of two thirty-two, top of two thirty-three, administration. Still engineering. It's another truck at the... Or is that something else?
Special equipment for seven zero one, we actually purchased a truck this fiscal year and we reducing it down to, I'd have to look at the list, but we're not asking for a truck in this division.
It's an engine, not a truck. Yes, indeed. So Lori, they just, no, but I guess more seriously, that's a good point. They did it last year with a truck, but they got money, it's still the same name, but it's not going to be a truck this time, you know?
Right.
But I guess they're going to tell us what it is in the capital?
Yes, sir.
At the end of the book. Middle of two thirty-three, power marketing. Ms. Abair?
Line item for promotion costs, five zero two seven zero eight two five zero three zero zero dash zero, promotion costs. Is that here? Tell me a little bit about it.
Apprenticeship.
No, no apprenticeships in this one. This would be, I'd have to, I may want to confirm with supervisor here, but that's an engineering promotion. I'd have to look, see what else is included. Oh, yeah, yes, too. And, and we also had a recent hire that was, the salary was set by civil service at a certain level, and we did not, we didn't have the budget for it, so this promotional line item includes that difference. So it's an engineer promotion plus the utilities resources analyst difference in what civil service had, you know, set the salary for and then what was budgeted.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. System engineering, bottom of two thirty-three, top of two thirty-four, please. Electrical systems construction, middle of two thirty-four. Bottom of two thirty-four, top of two thirty-five, environmental compliance. Two thirty-five, network engineering. Two thirty-six, capital appropriations. Don't look like you have anything, let's go to two sixty-three for the five-year capital. This is your pro forma, let's go to two sixty-four. Page two sixty-four. Top of two sixty-five, still in electric. Mr. Castile?
Terry, number seventy-seven, street light, street light upgrades, seven million. Is that what you were talking about, bringing in LEDs and...
Yes, sir.
Still okay?
That's the LED project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
What, what is the item number seventy? Pinhook plant rehab?
That's the one, you might recall, there was some debate about that one last year. Mr. Bellard was concerned about what we're going to do with that old plant. That's the plant at corner of General Mouta.
Right.
And, uh, in Pinhook.
Yeah.
And so what we're, what the, we, we put some money in there to ultimately try and do something to rehabilitate that plant, to do something with it, to get rid of, you know, all the old equipment that's in there, deal with the, you know, the environmental things that might still be left in there, you know, we've got asbestos, we've got lead paint and so forth. And put, put the property in a position to be repurposed somehow or other, you know, whether it's repurposed or something that LUS can use for storage or some other things for its purposes, or set up some office buildings. We haven't made the decision yet as to what we're going to do, but what we wanted to do is at least send a signal out there to the council and to the public that we want to try and do something with a building that's been sitting there doing nothing for, you know, fifty, sixty years.
I wish you would have called me, Terry.
What, you want, you wanted to buy it?
No, I want to repurpose it. I talked about that last year when we was talking about buying the, the less paid motel. I shared with the previous administration about facilities that we had within our government that we were not using and that people had considered to be eyesores. And I've been looking at that facility to see what we could do even as a private public partnership, possibly office space because of its location and whatever the case may be, but I, this is the first idea of it, that's why I'd like Pinhook. I didn't know what that was.
We spent a half an hour last year discussing this item.
Really?
Yeah. Oh, I remember quite well.
I wasn't here though.
I still have, I still have scars from it, but anyway, you know, being, being that the facility is, you know, has been used as a power plant before, you know, the usage far down the road needs to be something that's very well thought out, you know, I, I, it's not going to be the sort of thing that we would want to make into a residential area or whatever, because, you know, the, what we want to do is try and make it into something that we can use between, for the utility system. I mean, I see it as being potentially an office building for our, you know, for our employees. It could, there's, there's a lot of options, let's put it this way. It's a very nice facility, it's a very strong facility, it's a place I want to be at if there's ever a tornado coming through, because I think that place can stand anything. It was over-engineered considerably, that's how typically stuff in the forties was built that way. But no, we want to make it into something that can indeed be useful and, like you said, it's not a blight on the community.
Right.
And, but we already started clearing up some of the grounds there. There was a cooling tower at one point, still had some foundations there, so Jeff has been overseeing that and getting kind of things cleared up, and then we're going to probably next year or two, I mean, it's a, it's a, you're a fourth project, it's a seventy, yeah, it's a twenty twenty-one project, so it's not, it's not the top thing that we're looking at, but it is, we do have, that's what we put in the budget so we can deal with it.
And that's why we should have talked to you. I'd be going in twenty twenty.
Oh, well, we'll invite you to ground, to the groundbreaking.
We might have to do something with that. We're going to talk about seventy a little bit more. Water system, bottom of two sixty-five. Top of two sixty-six, water system. Bottom of two sixty-six, top of two sixty-seven, wastewater system. Page two eighty-eight. Starting in the middle of the page, this is your capital, too?
This is where the trucks are.
Yeah. Lot of trucks. Actually, a lot of special equipment. Yeah. Special equipment office chair, special equipment truck, special equipment balance scale.
Covers a lot of stuff.
Good thing y'all got a smart console. Two eighty-nine. Obviously, this is just the detail of what you have seen earlier in the actual different divisions. Two ninety. Two ninety-one. Two ninety-two. And two ninety-three. Page three fifteen, members, this is where the manning tables for utilities begin, three fifteen, middle of the page. Starting with the director's office. Starting with the Director's Office. Support Services, three fifteen. Three sixteen, Customer Service. And again, just for the official record, I am requesting that, um, break down, as was explained to us, for the cashier, Customer Service One Rep, Customer Service Two Rep, and Customer Service, I think it was a one, no, I'm sorry, the Fiber Customer Service. I would like that provided directly to me, please. Three sixteen, Environmental Compliance. Power Production. And this is all recap. Electric Operations, three seventeen. Three eighteen. Water Operations, Wastewater Operations, three eighteen, top of three nineteen. Three nineteen, Engineering. And three twenty. Kim, Mr. Yuval, that completes LUS. Any follow-up comments, or you, you said a lot early, so I'm sure you're good, huh?
Got always no one to stop.
Madam Clerk, do we have any green cards for LUS?
The first speaker is Simon Mahan.
Good afternoon. My name's Simon Mahan. I am a resident here in Lafayette, a LUS customer. I'm very excited to be hearing about some of the advancements with the LUS fiber and expanding that network. That sounds pretty awesome. Lafayette provides a number of opportunities for public engagement via boards and commissions. I just picked this up, kind of in the hallway. Very good opportunities for citizens to get more engaged with the community and provide input and on an ongoing basis. We don't really have anything like that for LUS, to have a citizen board or a separate board, to talk about bigger issues. Five minutes to talk about the biggest budget item in LCG's annual process is simply not enough in order to talk about a lot of the really complex issues that are facing our utility. With the help of a number of citizens and experts, I've worked together with them to put together a document that we are calling the State of LUS. I'll be dropping this off and emailing you all a copy later this evening that goes over and reviews some of the deeper issues that are going on at LUS and that we've been looking at over the past few years, and in particular with regards to the brand-new power plant that's being proposed. With that in mind, LUS has, within the budget, it's impossible to tell what the twenty-six million dollars is being appropriated for, for this upcoming year. Thank you to Councilmember Conk for asking the question about these new power facilities that would be constructed here in Lafayette. And if you look at that line item, it's a hundred and twenty million dollars. It is a massive cost that is not being discussed adequately here, and I don't know where we would end up discussing it. Twenty-six million dollars would be appropriated under this budget for this upcoming year into twenty eighteen, and then ninety-three million dollars into the next fiscal year, pending bonds or not. This power plant that's being proposed, it's unnecessary, uneconomic, and unpopular. The decision to build another peaker power plant in town is based off of a flawed study and misinformation. When LUS hired the consultancy firm Burns and McDonnell to conduct its Integrated Resource Plan in twenty sixteen last year, the city spent about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to conduct that study. That study excluded renewable energy resources and energy efficiency programs as viable alternatives to a new-build power plant. The IRP also overestimated the cost of purchasing energy and capacity from neighboring utilities because we're part of the MISO market, and it overestimated LUS's electricity growth demand. Burns and McDonnell, the same company that conducted the study for us, also provides the services to engineer, procure, and construct the reciprocating internal combustion engine power plant that they are recommending that we build. This is a conflict of interest. MISO's market already has surplus power plant capacity, as Mr. Yuval mentioned. There is a glut of the number of power plants that are available in the MISO market currently. That suggests from MISO that there is no need for LUS to build our own power plant right now. LUS could buy capacity and energy from neighboring facilities at a lower cost than building our own reciprocating internal combustion engine peaker plant. MISO has actually identified up to forty-nine hundred megawatts of surplus power up to the year twenty-twenty-two. MISO goes through an annual process, an auction process, to evaluate power plant capacity. They do this every single year, and it's on a five-year time horizon. So we can take a pause, wait, and see what the capacity market is doing within MISO before we start budgeting twenty-six to a hundred and twenty million dollars. Rice peaker plants use natural gas less efficiency, less efficiently than combined-cycle natural gas power plants, so when the rice facilities, reciprocating internal combustion engines, compete against a more efficient natural gas power plant, combined-cycle natural gas power plants, the combined-cycle units get picked first in the MISO market because they're cheaper. If we build this new reciprocating engine, it is possible that it gets outcompeted by more efficient power plants, and not just cheaper combustion, combined-cycle natural gas units, but also renewable energy as power prices for those markets come down. Alternatively, Southwestern Electric Power Company is a Louisiana-based utility up in Shreveport, and they've recently announced that they are helping construct the nation's largest wind farm, and they're doing it in part because they're going to be saving their customers over five billion dollars because it is a lower-cost alternative for them. Thank you.
Thank you. You say you're going to provide a copy of your report?
Yes, sir. And I would like to meet with anyone and everyone as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker, Dennis Sullivan.
Good afternoon. My name is Dennis Sullivan. I'm a citizen of Lafayette and an LUS customer. My topic today is public involvement in LUS decisions. In a public meeting at the main library last night where we're discussing the LGC, LCG budget process, a lady from Scott, older than my sixty-six years, mentioned that she remembers Lafayette when there were three people that ran the city, and that one of them was the person in charge of LUS. That wasn't that long ago, but things have changed quite a bit since that time. We would be, I would be naive, and you, with council members, would be gullible if we believed that LUS could be called a truly open, a system truly open to public input in how they run their, how they run our utility. We've made good progress. I was impressed in the last, in a recent LPUA meeting when Terry Yuval announced that the city was moving ahead with LED lighting. That's something that we've been calling for, for quite some time, groups that are trying to see a change in Lafayette's, in Lafayette's LUS system. Terry also noted that the MISO rates were approaching a level where Lafayette might consider purchases from that energy sources, from those energy sources. I take these as evidence of positive, a positive progress in our dealings with LUS. When one of our citizens group studied how other progressive cities in the United States were generating and buying their electrical power, we focused in large part on the IRP process, or the Integrated Resource Planning process. Many of these, it's in this process that many of the citizens that were interested in how their utilities were run were able to give their input and to also learn from their citizens, from their utilities exactly how, what the game plan was for the future, where the sources of the utilities would be, and how, how we would work together to make a, to generate the power for our city. So the IRP process is a very powerful tool. I would like the city council to, to start a program where, where you encourage the LUS to, to get with, or to open the process of the IRP way before the company is, is hired to, to do the actual study, but, but to, to get citizen input and to get people involved so that decisions can be made like the ones that Simon was speaking about before, where the power, where will, where will we get our power from, where, what will that mean about what Lafayette, about Lafayette? I had thirty-seven years in the, in the oil industry, and I think that the use of gas in the generation of, of our utilities would be much preferred to the, to the powder basin coals that we've been using over the years. So anyway, it's an invitation to the council. Let's make this council-driven change by encouraging LUS to involve citizen input and so that, so that our citizen, our Lafayette utility system will be not only citizen-owned, but will begin to more accurately reflect the values of our community and where we make our power. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lilian Espinoza-Gala. Most of you weren't here five years ago, twenty twelve, when we came before you here and asked you not to spend eighty-eight million dollars on scrubbers for the coal plant, and we, we came to multiple meetings, and you said we should get involved in the budget meetings. And so we tried to do our homework this time. But I was really surprised to find out we're about to spend a hundred and twenty million dollars. I would just like to ask, when did that come up? Mr. Rudro? When did you first learn that we were going to spend a hundred and twenty million dollars?
Uh, when I got on the council, there's been a plan in place through LUS as far as how we weed out old systems and move into our new system. So it's been an ongoing process since I've been here, actually. It's not all done in one year, though. Kind of like what Mr. Mahan made mention of, it's sequencing over multiple years. And, and as you all have learned over some of the meetings that you have had, it's not just a switch that you cut off one and turn the other one on. So this process has been going on for quite some time.
But you're the only one here today that was here in twenty twelve when we asked you if we could have combined-cycle natural gas.
But Mr. Castillo was here too.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So I just wondered how we ended up back five years still asking for combined-cycle natural gas that uses less water. You know, Mr. Conk? I mean...
We don't, at the budget, we don't like do question-and-answer sessions like that. I wanted to respond to you to get you something, but like the previous speaker indicated, we've come a long way, okay? Mr. Yuval, as I appreciated, has made himself more available. The department has been hearing some things, and that's how we've made these adjustments. Again, unfortunately, it's not just a turn on and a turn off. And, and my desire, and I think what I've heard from the balance of the council during the time that I've been here, is that the desire is to get where we need to be. But it's, it's some very unique situations, and it's, they're not always easily explained, and they're not always agreed upon or even understood at times. But if you go back those years and you see where we were then, and if you see the plans that are in place now, progress has been made. And I will tell you that as long, you know, for the next two and a half years, because I got more time behind me than I do in front of me, right, we're going to contract, we're going to, as far as this council is concerned, I plan to live a long time. Let me clear that up. I could walk out of here and get struck by lightning if I don't claim something. But anyway, you know, it's, for me, it's about, it's about progress. We got professionals in the field. It's interesting, having gone through this budget, we, we had a lot of talk about some personnel matters. We have a lot of professionals in this field who I will admit know a whole lot more than I do. As the elected official, I have to balance a combination of listening to the people and honoring and respecting the professionals in the field and trying to make a best practices decision. So again, without getting into a whole lot of question-and-answer and taking up too much of your time, I will say, look at where we were, if you're going to ask me about five years ago, look at where we were, then look at where we were now. And I hope in five years, if we ask that same question to whoever sits in this seat, then we're going to be in a better place with the intending to go to get where we need to be. So that, that's how I would respond to that.
Okay, well, I would just like to say, I hope in five years, the coal plant is shut down, and that we're on combined-cycle natural gas.
And as you know, a lot of that has to do with Washington.
With what?
Washington, regulations, the Federals coming on down, and some of the things that have been encouraged, and what different administrations want, and the direction we're going. So unfortunately, by the time it gets to the local level, I'll be the first to admit, it's a lot. You know, you could go from one president who, who promotes and encourages more clean energy, and you could fall into a president who's talking about reopening the coal mine. So it's, it's just, and as, as a local government, a lot of times, we could do some things on our own, but most times, we waiting for the direction, what's going to happen. So it's a lot. And I just wanted to share that with you, but I do agree with you. In five years, if we could achieve that, God bless us. God bless us.
I would just hope that you can include the public in the next Integrated Resource Management Plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, the following citizen signed in, did not wish to speak, but noted the following comments. Janet Ridlin supports renewable energy, solar and/or wind being included in the LUS energy mix. Blair Miller opposes the request from LUS on any new energy generating system, i.e., the one-hundred-million-dollar power plant in the city of Lafayette or surrounding parish, but she does support renewable energy instead. And finally, Bill Young, he did not indicate support or oppose, but I'm suspecting he supports citizen input on LUS matters.
Thank you. Okay, so we've honored every green card. I was going to say blue card. We, we changed the color of the cards during budget time, because it's the budget, right, it's about the money. So it's a green card during budget season. It's normally a blue card for regular meetings. I almost made a mistake. So we've honored all the green cards. Okay? Okay, now we're going to move to Communications. I see finance has taken the opportunity to go and kind of relieve themselves. Y'all okay? Okay. You could go, yeah. I'm just teasing low. We'll let those members of LUS leave before we get started. We're going to be starting on page two thirty, two thirty-seven. Okay. Ms. Troops?
Before we get into Communications, I wanted to bring a matter of housekeeping to your attention. Ms. Abear, thank you very much for bringing this to Terry's attention. And, you know, about that award that we talked about earlier, we don't win that award on the proposed budget book. We wait till you guys work your magic, and then we turn in our adoption. We wait till you guys work your magic, and then we turn in our adopted budget book. So that being said, every now and then, there's something that might need a correction in the proposed budget book. On page 142 in the budget book, there's an account that begins with Fund Number 210, and it says Reserve Loan to Communications. That is an error. That really should say Reserve Loan Receivable. And you can tell by that new account number, Account 210, at the beginning of that, Fund 210. If you look on page 14 of the proposed budget book, you'll see a description of Fund 210, and that is the new fund that is being introduced in this budget for the Revitalization and Development Fund. So that $1 million is for a revolving loan fund and not to the communications system. We will have a matter of housekeeping when we bring up finances accounts for a name change on that account. And once again, I apologize for that. We're sometimes printing this proposed budget book the morning of introduction, and that's how these things kind of slip through the cracks. Can we now get on to communications?
On page 14, a description of it?
Page 14 should be a description of the Fund 210.
Okay, there it is.
And so the account number is correct. It was the description of the line item that came over wrong. So we're checking in to see how that happened.
And one more time, who found it?
Ms. Abear, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention.
Just making sure.
Might have cost us our award.
Oh, some would say a lifesaver, some would say. Thank you.
Do we have a Ms. Abear?
Okay, moving on to Communications Fund. The budget, this proposed budget is an increase of about 2%. You will not see any change in personnel. They have 72 people budgeted this year, and they had 72 in the current budget. You'll see other expenses increased by about $1.6 million, which is offset by about $800,000 expected decrease in the cost of goods sold.
Okay. Of course, Mr. Yuval chose to combine his comments in his first presentation. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we'll go right into the review members, and we're gonna go to page 238. Administration and Support. 238, General Accounts. 239, Operations. And they need operations that special equipment capital, 89510-0.
Hi, it's Les Reiman, Chief Communications Engineer. It's for our new bucket truck, our refurbishment of an old bucket truck, new splice trailer, and some test equipment.
Thank you very much. Bottom of 239, Warehouse. 240, Business Support Services, 240. Ms. Abear.
I'm looking at 53237905033-0. Promotion cost, can you explain the increase, the significant increase?
The promotion is an Engineering A2 to an Engineering A3.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
It's a promotion for an Engineering A2 to an Engineering A3.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Castile.
Line item 5323790707950, Customer Relations. We had actuals of 536, then we budgeted 750. Right now, we're at 351. We budgeted and projected 750, but we're going up to 900,000.
Right. As we, you know, this is a very competitive business, and we're getting more and more sponsorships at various events, which are important to be able to attract people to buy our services. Just like any other business, you've got to advertise. You've got to do the things that's necessary to get people's attention. One of the things that we think is our strong suit is the fact that we are part of the community. There's a lot of respect for the utility system, a lot of respect for the telecommunications system. But you know, we have learned that unless we're engaged with sponsorships, with advertising...